Hello, welcome to Reality TV. I'm Raymond Bakari and today I'm joined by Providence City Councilman for Ward 14, Councilman David Salvatore. Councilman Salvatore, how are you today?
I'm good, thanks Raymond. Thank you for having me.
No problem. It's a pleasure, mind, to have you on the show. Just diving right into it here, a general question I usually ask everybody when it comes to their political origin story. What made you want to get into politics?
So I am a lifelong Rhode Islander. I actually still live in on the block that I grew up on. I still live in the two-family home that I grew up in. And, you know, growing up, I would tell folks all the time, our neighbors were either Red Sox or Yankee fans. We were passionate about the Boston Celtics and we loved our local politics. And, you know, that held true for me. I'm a Red Sox fan. But I was surrounded by great people in my neighborhood who really were instrumental in shaping my adulthood. And I thought one way of giving back to the community that I love so much was by running for office and being their voice in City Hall. So I'm very passionate about representing those, those folks who, again, were instrumental in, in my life.
And you're, you're also a big advocate of financial and pension reform within the city and a big issue is our city's unfunded pension obligations, which is over a billion dollars and a big chunk of the budget, of the annual budgets used to try to plug up that hole and prevent it from going further into further in the hole. And the possibility, if it keeps going further, is it could end up bankrupting the city if this isn't addressed quickly and effectively. And, you know, given that the pandemic happened, that hurt the city as well financially. What have you done so far in your time on the City Council to address this issue?
So during my first term on the City Council, then-City Council President Michael Solomon approached me and asked me what it was I was interested and passionate about in regards to being a member of the City Council. And I gave him a few items. I wanted to be a member of the City Council's Finance Committee. And I also wanted to address that looming unfunded pension liability that we've read so much about in years prior. And he allowed me to chair a subcommittee to make a series of recommendations that eventually saved the city taxpayer tens of millions of dollars. And it prevented us from, as a city, our state's capital city, from falling into bankruptcy. And that experience was, was eye-opening for me because it was, it was a difficult conversation to have publicly, especially with so many folks who I knew who were pensioners or who were city employees. But my message at the time was the long-term health of the city's finances and our pension system were paramount at the time. Because I wanted to see not only our city succeed financially, but I also wanted to see those pensioners and those city employees have a sustainable retirement where they were collecting their pension checks on time. So again, I'm quite proud of the work that I did around leading this effort during my first term on the council and working collaboratively with Mayor Taveras's administration. You know, when I was campaigning, knocking on doors, talking with folks, I framed this message in such a way that if we wanted to do this, we had to work collaboratively with Mayor Taveras and his administration so that we could continue delivering city services to our residents on time. There is still that looming issue around the pension system today. I did introduce a resolution last year that called for a working group or a committee to start looking at other areas that we could leverage, such as public property. You know, when you look at the current employee, that only makes up 24% of the payout every month for, for pension payments or that ARC payment, the, what the city taxpayer is required to put in the pension system. So again, I don't want to pick on pensioners, but I think there is a lot of work to do around this area and I wouldn't suggest cutting their pensions, but I think there are some areas that we could explore so that we could put the pension system on a sustainable track moving forward.
And one of the solutions that I bring up frequently on the show that recently I was told that if it could be done legally, it would only free up like 10 to 12%. And, you know, either way, that's still more money that could be funded for basic city services and would prevent a possible receivership down the line. So this solution that I constantly bring up whenever we talk about this topic is something that Cranston did in 2010 with the Teamsters Union and Laborers Union in 2010 and 2015 respectively, where they got out of the pension business, but they made it to where the employees, new employees would receive an individual IRA that they would own themselves. Has that idea been considered and how possible would that be in Providence to do?
So if you're speaking of a hybrid approach, something very similar that state employees participated, it hasn't, that concept hasn't officially been proposed. I know it's been kicked around over the years. And I think the reason why there's, I don't want to say reluctance, but folks don't think it's going to save the money that they expect or taxpayers would expect. Now, I know that's a very common practice in the private sector. Look, it's something that I'm willing to look at, but frankly, I'm not certain that Providence should continue being in the pension business. Should we join the state municipal employee, employees retirement system? That's something that I think we should seriously look at. Now, I think, you know, residents across the state might say, wait a minute, we're not going to foot the bill for Providence's sins of the past. That's not what the approach would be, but when you start pooling municipal pension payments together, there could be an opportunity for some cost savings for local taxpayers in Providence. But again, I think we should be looking at our public property and how we leverage that property. We have a couple of vacant firehouses that we haven't done anything with in, in years in Providence. I know that there's the Providence Water Supply Board that is being used for training purposes by our public safety departments. And then there's Roger Williams Park, which should be a public park for our residents to take advantage of. But should that be controlled by the state of Rhode Island? Again, if there are, I think, opportunities to save taxpayers' money in Providence around this issue, let's start looking at this issue holistically rather than the one-off approach.
Is it fair to say that you'd be on board with that idea that Cranston did 10 years ago?
I would have to look, yeah, I would have to look at the proposal and how much money it could save us. And then obviously that's a contractual conversation that has to be had with our, with our friends in, in labor. So again, I'm always willing to have conversations with anybody who's interested in this topic. I feel like I'm one of the only folks on the council over the last 11 years who, who has had the will to really want to do something around it. I do fear that time is running out. And if we don't do something quickly, we're going to find ourselves in a dire situation.
And this is an issue that will be very, that will be focused on a lot in the 2022 Providence mayoral election because it's going to be one of the biggest issues that this next mayor will have to focus on come January of 2023. And there's a few candidates now. Brett Smiley's announced, Gonzalo Cuervo's announced, City Councilwoman Yerba La Fortune. I believe she's still currently exploring the option. And then now former Council President Michael Solomon is going to announce in the coming weeks. And then I believe Representative Ray Hall said in like beginning of August, he's going to make the decision. And you're term limited on the City Council. I'm just curious, are you planning on running for mayor of Providence in 2022?
All good people who you mentioned, by the way, Raymond. They're, they're all smart. They all have great ideas. And I know that each and every one of them, because I know them well, each and every one of them are passionate about Providence. And I think that's what we need in our capital city. We need folks who are passionate about moving the city in a positive direction. So I'm proud that folks who I know very well are interested or are exploring the Providence mayor's race. I'm not going to rule anything out personally. I will say that I, I have a three-year-old little boy who is my primary focus at the moment. And look, Providence is my passion. Providence has been in my heart my entire life. I, I still live in the city that was, again, instrumental in shaping my adulthood. I still live in the same home that I grew up in. So again, Providence is important to me. I won't rule anything out at the moment. But again, I'm happy to hear that folks are really taking a serious look at wanting to move our city in a, in a positive direction. That does not mean that we haven't done that over the last six and a half years. I think, I think Mayor Taveras, I think righted the ship in terms of our financial footing. We were looking at bankruptcy when I was first elected and I didn't ever think that those were the first issues that I would be addressing. You know, when you knock on doors in a city council race, people are interested in those quality of life issues. What are you going to do to get the sidewalk replaced? What are you going to do to make sure that snow is removed from my dead-end street? But again, when you translate that in a way around our finances that makes sense to people, then they start, their eyes become wider to some of the financial issues facing the city. And I think that's what the next mayor is going to have to focus on primarily.
And when it comes to a mayoral election in Providence, it's always good to get your ducks in a row and get ready like a year out. And we've seen that Gonzalo Cuervo announced, actually probably the earliest that I've ever seen a mayoral candidate announce in recent history, like almost two years out. And I'm just curious because now it's getting to the point where the primary is going to get heated up. We're seeing like a potential five to six-way race. Do you have a certain like timeframe when you would have to make that decision?
I think that decision would have to be made by late fall. As a member of the City Council, I think I would have inherent advantage because I am able to get in front of constituents on a regular basis, whereas some of the other candidates who have announced already or are exploring haven't really engaged members of, of the public as much as a city council member would, or a city, sitting, city council member would.
And another office that I've heard your name speculated for to possibly be considering is a general treasurer. That's going to be an open seat. You had worked for the office previously in your time in politics. I'm just curious, is that a potential option that you could look at in 2022?
It's, it's something, again, I'm passionate about the treasurer's office because when I worked there, secondly, the issues that that general officer is responsible for is very important to the state of Rhode Island and certainly the capital city. So again, I'm not going to rule anything out at the moment. I know that my name has been circulated for the general treasurer's office. Again, I'll make that decision at some point in the fall, late fall, and then circle back with everybody.
And now looking at the issues facing the city, because some of these issues might be ones that you would have to address if you do end up running, choosing to run for mayor by, by late fall, when you said you would make that decision. Another, one of the big issues is the issue of defunding the police. We're currently in the summer. Statistically, that's when crime is at its highest. And there's been cities across the country where some have defunded the police and some have brought money back because they've seen that crime has gone up right after that happened. Where do you personally stand on the issue of defunding the police?
Let me be upfront and very clear about this. I have never subscribed to this concept of defunding our police department. When you look at our police department historically, it has been defunded over the decades. Now, with that said, our police department is not perfect. I've made that very clear and I think we have a lot of work to do around how we train our police officers. But the constituents who I speak to on a daily basis are looking for more of a police presence and proactive policing. So for instance, I introduced in the City Council passed an ordinance around housing for disabled persons and elderly residents. And what I'm asking those property owners to do via this ordinance is create a security plan that is to be submitted to the Providence Police Department. And then the Providence Police Department would go out subsequent to approving that security plan and perform what are called spot inspections of these properties to make sure that they have the appropriate safeguards and security measures in place to keep some of our more vulnerable residents safe at all times. I've heard complaints from constituents who are housed in these complexes that, you know, the front door is unlocked all of the time or they don't have an active smoke alarm system. So again, that's the proactive policing that I'm looking for from our police department. And that's a piece of legislation that had the full support of Colonel Clements and his men and women because while they're proactively keeping people safe, it allows for them to address other issues such as violent crime, which has plagued our city for now over a few months.
And a common point that's also brought up when we talk about defunding the police is some are in favor of shifting some money to then have mental health workers and social workers address mental health crises instead of police officers, which the, then what I would bring up is that when you look at that, the budget situation, how is that going to be paid for? Because some have called to take money out of the police budget. Some, like Brett Smiley, have, has called for expanding the tax base so we don't have to take money from the police budget. Would you personally support any measures that takes money from the police budget and then brings it to the programs that would have these mental health workers and social workers address the mental health crises?
Yeah. Again, I don't support defunding our police budget, but I do support programs that were passed in this, in this current year budget, the fiscal year 22 budget, which is the diversion program and working with the Providence Center and Family Services of Rhode Island so that Providence's police officers don't necessarily have to go on that call where there's a fender bender or there's a mental health issue. So again, I think that frees up our police officers to do proactive policing in other areas of the city. And yes, they do cost money. However, the city of Providence did receive funding through the American Rescue Plan Act. And again, that could be an investment in a program that could be long-term and sustainable over time if budgeted properly.
And now looking at this, one of the many notable things you had done on your time in the City Council, one of them was launching the program Be Heard PVD. Can you explain for those watching what that program is and what the goal is and how it's benefited the city so far?
So during my time as City Council President, I wanted to see, and I still want to see, our residents engaged in local government. So whenever the City Council holds a public hearing, I want the City Council Office and the City Clerk's Office to push out that meeting information to as many residents as possible. And that, that means using technology and various social media platforms and advertising so that folks are engaged and they know what their city council members are considering in terms of local legislation. I don't know if the current city council leadership is still utilizing it. I don't think they are. But I would love to see us bring that back to life so that our residents are engaged on a regular basis on legislation that we're considering. A, an ordinance that the City Council recently passed that I championed was our Green and Complete Streets Ordinance. And it was wonderful to see dozens of community residents coming out in support of making our street infrastructure safer for all residents, so creating more equitable spaces for people to move around in Providence. That garnered a lot of public support because we pushed out that information to constituencies across the city. And again, I think that that's a way of getting folks more involved in, in their local government and what their local officials are considering as, as elected members. What I would also love to do is during my time as City Council President, and I hope we can continue doing this, is that whenever there's a vacancy on a board or commission in Providence, that we push that information out to the public and that we can maximize the amount of talent that's in the city of Providence. And that these politically charged positions at times become open to all members of the public based on their skillset. I think there are times, Raymond, that we don't, there's a lot of untapped resources in terms of skillsets and talent in Providence. Because a lot of these positions have been so politically charged over the years that we don't open up the application process to as many folks as we shouldn't. So I think if we widen that net and allow people to apply for these positions in an open and transparent manner, you're going to see folks be much more civically engaged in, in our capital city.
And you had mentioned untapped resources, which actually plays into my next subtopic within what you've done over your time in the council. You've also been a big advocate for attracting and allowing businesses in Providence to thrive. And there's also like this complicated matter where there's not like as much room in Providence anymore because Brown and PC take up a lot of room. And then there's the argument of if they should pay their fair share, which arguably they probably have not over, over the past years. So this is kind of a two-part question, given that we're still talking about attracting and allowing businesses to thrive. What could be done to attract more businesses to the city and utilize the city's economic potential? And does any of it involve making Brown University and PC pay their, pay their fair shares in taxes?
So during my time on the council, I have been a strong advocate for streamlining the tax stabilization agreement process. And for those of you who don't know what a tax stabilization agreement is, that is an ordinance that is passed by the City Council that provides for a schedule of commercial property taxes to be paid over a term for a developer who wants to either build a new piece of, of development or they want to renovate an existing building. And the reason why, Raymond, we have tax stabilization agreements in Providence is because currently Providence has the fourth highest effective commercial property tax rate in the country. And without that tax stabilization agreement, we are not going to attract the investments that we need to grow. With that said, I have been a strong supporter of streamlining that approach in a way that is fair for every developer. So something that is clear and predictable. And I'm very happy that the Providence City Council has adopted that policy this year. I think it's important that we send a message to local developers as well as national developers that Providence is open for business, but everybody is going to be treated the same and those one-off agreements aren't going to be tolerated anymore.
And kind of circling back to that second part of the, of the question, making Brown and Brown University and PC pay their fair share in taxes. And this is, this is an issue that I looked at recently and I was thinking about and I, I don't know how correct I may be on this analogy, but wouldn't we have, the, the city have the advantage in making sure they pay their fair taxes? Because what, what is Brown University and PC going to do? Threaten to leave the city? That would actually make them, that would actually make it worse for them and it would cost more for them. So what could be stopping them from actually making them pay their fair share?
No, I think, I think that's a fair point, Raymond. And, you know, when we're talking about our institutions in Providence, including our hospitals, they are economic engines in Providence and they, they produce a lot of economic activity. With that said, I think it's unfair to the current homeowner who are paying taxes based on current assessments. And the pilot programs that are agreed to over a 10-year period of time are a snapshot in time. So I think at some point, we're going to have to have a tough-love conversation with some of the institutions, including Brown University, about what they pay for the, to the city in terms of their pilot agreements. But if the state of Rhode Island and the General Assembly aren't going to allow us to tax or impose fees on, on these institutions, there's not a lot that the city of Providence can do. Now, there are two pilot programs, very distinct programs. There's one, the state pilot program, which basically reimburses a city or town who is the host to that institution. And, you know, currently, I don't believe it's fully funded. For years, we fought as a capital city, along with other municipalities, to fully fund that state pilot program, which again reimburses cities and towns up to 27% of what they would have received in property taxes. I don't believe that this year's fiscal budget is fully funded. And I think a lot of that has to do with the American Rescue Plan Act money that was, that was sent down from the federal government. Then there are the local negotiated pilot programs. And I think this is something that, that the city of Providence is going to have to have, again, tough-love conversations with the Brown Universities of the world to say, look, 40% of the accessible land in Providence is not taxable. That's not good for growth. It's not good for prospective home buyers because they're already being priced out of the housing market because of a lot of the reasons that we're talking about today. So again, I think, I think we're going to have to have these conversations when the, the local pilot agreements sunset. And we'll see, we'll see where things land. But again, I think they should be paying a little more and obviously homeowners and tenants pay their fair share and we'll be asking the same of, of the institutions who call Providence home as well.
And now shifting the focus to another big issue facing the city, which is our city's public school system. The school system was failing and required state takeover. There are a lot of sub-issues that are clouded over by this main issue of education. One of those is the expansion of charter schools. But before we talk about that issue, since the failing school system had been a lingering issue for years, what could have been done differently in terms of fixing the school system?
Well, I think the first thing that should have been done decades ago, and a lot of this was done for political purposes, was the funding of school building infrastructure. I think for years, our school buildings were neglected. And that has a detrimental effect on a young person's ability to learn in a then 20th, 20th century setting. Okay, now we're in the 21st century and our students still are not receiving the world-class education that they should be receiving because a lot of these buildings are crumbling, they're not maintained. So I think that's something that should have been done decades ago, instead of kicking that can down, down the road for political purposes. Because look, at, at the end of the day, many of the constituents who send their children to a traditional Providence public school, they're not necessarily constituents who are voters. Okay, they're not necessarily those neighborhood schools anymore. And it's, it's really unfortunate that the city of Providence didn't maintain those buildings or the school district didn't maintain those buildings over, over the years. And again, I think that, that has had a detrimental effect on education outcomes in Providence.
And now shifting to charter schools, this has been brought up as a potential solution to address the education problem in our city. It has mixed reactions from a number of elected officials. You have Governor McKee and Lieutenant Governor Mattos who are in favor of charter schools. Then you have this battle going on between the mayor, Mayor Loza and Governor McKee on how this is going to be handled. And it's just created this big divide amongst our elected officials on how they view it. But public polling has showed that a number of Providence residents are in favor of it. I believe the number was 80%, if I recall correctly. Where do you personally stand on the expansion of charter schools in Providence?
I am a product of Providence Public Schools and they did right by me. I'm a member of the Providence City Council, so I have to think that they did something right. Look, if we're going to expand charter schools in the city of Providence, which I'm not necessarily opposed to, we need to fund our traditional public schools. And we can't continue to underfund them. And I think that's been another issue over the decades where the city has not funded the school department budget appropriately. And now you have a situation where you, where you might have competing or parallel school districts. You have charters and then you have your traditional public school districts. If we're going to provide funding for one, then we have to address the, the shortfalls around traditional public school funding. And again, if, if folks are supportive of that parallel district, then that's fine, so long as our traditional public schools are adequately funded as well.
So like a healthy balance in the middle?
It could be a healthy balance in the middle. And, and look, I think parents should have choices for their children. If they want to send their child to a traditional Providence public school, then they should. And that's something that I strongly support. But there are constituents in Providence who feel that there could be an alternative to that, especially around disciplines that children are interested in. But there's an opportunity where the traditional public school district and the, the charter community should be working together. And that was always the purpose of having charters and mayoral academies in Rhode Island. There were supposed to be incubators for the traditional public school system to thrive. And it's become more of a competitive atmosphere rather than collaborating, collaborating and working together on, on education outcomes.
And these next few, since there are a lot more issues to focus on in the city, these next few I'm going to do in like lightning, lightning rounds style where I'll go one after another, after another. This first one, I'm just going to provide a little context to this question because whenever I ask you on the show, I usually get one or two, one of two answers. One, somebody asks, what exactly am I talking about? Even though Mayor Loza has said multiple times that Providence is a sanctuary city. And then the other one recently where I was told that apparently it was a conservative talking point to say that Providence is a sanctuary city. When Mayor Loza himself has called this, called the city a sanctuary city. And then even Governor, then Governor Lincoln Shafie had called Rhode Island a sanctuary state. So just with all that context considered, what is your stance on Providence's status as a sanctuary city?
I'm not certain that we are, Raymond. I'm not certain that Rhode Island or the capital city for that matter, is considered a sanctuary city or state. And the reason why I say that is because our local police department in Providence complies with federal law. And anything outside of that falls under the jurisdiction of the local police department and the city. So I haven't been convinced over the years that we are defined under the federal law as a sanctuary city. And we haven't jeopardized federal funding as a result of being a sanctuary city. Now, I know then-President Trump included Providence on, on the list of municipalities across the country that were going to be in jeopardy of losing funding. I think that, that issue was politicized and never put Providence in that, in that space of losing federal funding. So I think there's a lot of gray area around here and especially around the, the federal definition of sanctuary city. And again, I'm not convinced that under the federal definition and the funding that we receive, that we are a sanctuary city. Although we are very welcoming and inclusive, which I fully support.
That was what I was going to mention in the follow-up because Mayor Loza multiple times has called Providence a sanctuary city. Since you had mentioned that under the federal definition that we're not, would that be considered misleading what Mayor Loza is saying then?
I, I, you would have to ask Mayor Loza which definition he's looking at and why he would consider Providence to be a sanctuary city. But again, I think from my perspective is Rhode Island, specifically the city of Providence, needs to be welcoming. We need to be inclusive. And that's how you grow your economy, Raymond. Okay, people come to America to make a better life for themselves. And I think we'll continue being that great nation so long as we are inclusive and we are welcoming. And I know we are in Providence. And look, some of my best friends are immigrants and they come from immigrant backgrounds and they are succeeding in our local economy. And we have to embrace that.
And the, for this next and final part of the lightning round format, there's a, recently there's been a pilot program launched for a guaranteed basic income program for residents. What's your stance on it?
So I support the, the pilot program. It's my understanding that the CEO of Twitter and some others have provided some philanthropic resources to fund this program. Look, Americans are struggling and we see it right here at home in Providence and in Rhode Island. They're struggling every day to make ends meet. Some people are working, working two and three full-time jobs just to get by, to pay the bills. So if there are programs available to our more vulnerable residents, then I fully support it. I won't say I'm concerned, but what I don't want to see are local dollars be expended for these programs. And the reason why is we are not on solid financial footing at the moment in the city of Providence. And I don't think we could afford a long-term sustainable program like guaranteed income only using Providence tax dollars. I think that would be over-promising and under-delivering. I think that would be over-promising and under, under-delivering.
And you had answered my follow-up, which was going to be would um, the, the, the line be drawn if tax dollars are being used? And you seem pretty um, forward that, that only if it's being funded by the philanthropologists and no money from the tax dollars should not be used on that. So now I'm looking at uh, my uh, final two questions. These are the non-political questions. They take a step away from the political issues. When preparing for this interview, I found out that you had attended Rhode Island College and this is one of my favorite questions to ask to Rick alumni because that's where I currently attend. Can you share where your time was like at Rick and what you missed the most about it?
Oh, my time at Rick was, um, I didn't spend a lot of time on campus because I was, I was very busy working. Um, I I worked full-time while going to college full-time. But I, and I, and I made some really, really good friends uh, during my time there. I will say the business department was always accessible and willing to work with the student body on various projects and getting involved in the community as well. So I really enjoyed working with the business, uh, the business department and the students who were my peers at the time.
And my final question that I ask everyone on the show to keep tradition is, in your opinion, what do you think Rhode Island is best known for?
Our people. Our people are, I I I can't say enough about the people of Providence. And while we disagree at times, we always tend to find common ground. And there isn't that six degrees of separation. We all know each other in some way or fashion. And I think that's what makes Providence and and Rhode Island great. Uh, you know, when other parts of the country are looking at. A place to expand or a place to pick up and move a family as as a, the result of employment. They look at a place like Providence and Rhode Island because we're economically or geographically, uh, from a geography perspective. We're positioned between Boston and New York, right? And our cost of living is less at times. And we provide so much in terms of resources. We have a great coastline. Uh, we have a a great urban setting in Providence. And again, just the people from a diverse perspective, living in such a small dense place. Really makes us unique. I also love our culinary scene uh, and our hospitality industry. Both doing great work to attract new families, new homeowners and new uh, new commerce in our state. So there's a lot to offer here in Rhode Island and it's something that makes us certainly uh, unique versus the rest of the country.
It certainly is, and I always mention this point because we're such a small state and everybody knows each other. I'm literally neighbors with the lieutenant governor and the mayor of our city. And I just, I I find that amazing and something that you, you won't be able to have in like Texas or New York. And you had mentioned uh, cause uh, our uh, food scene. I just want to ask this uh, final follow-up before I close the interview. Do you have a specific place you'd like to go on uh, at Federal Hill?
On Federal Hill. So I would have to say my favorite restaurant of all time on Federal Hill is uh, the Old Canteen, Joe Marzilli's Old Canteen. Uh, I've been going there since I was, I was a little boy. Uh, and the quality of the food is great, great portions. But there are so many great restaurants along Federal Hill. When I see what's happening at uh, De Pasqua Plaza. On a, on a Friday night or Saturday night, it really brings the Italian culture to life. Uh, and what I grew up with uh, in Providence. So again, there are a lot of great restaurants uh, and cuisines now on Federal Hill, oh, Federal Hill in Providence. And I would just tell residents, if they don't get a chance to go up there, make the time, you'll really enjoy it. And it's again, part of what makes our city and our state so special.
Without a doubt, and one of the things I'm looking the most forward to is more people get vaccinated when Federal Hill is opened up again and everybody's just having a great time. That's one of the things I'm looking forward the most to, to do the most once um, hopefully we get back to normal, uh, normalcy. Councilman Salvatore, I want to thank you so much for coming on the show. It's been a pleasure mine to have you on.
My pleasure. Thank you, Raymond.
And thank you once again for watching this episode of Reality TV. If you want to see future episodes as soon as they're posted on the channel. Please click the subscribe button down below along with the post certification bell icon to the right of it. I'm Raymond Bakari and I'll see you on the next episode.